Airplane tickets, yeah.
Hey, everyone. Welcome to the last, almost last week. I think, I think we have three more sessions left, but today we're going to be talking about, or wrapping up our plans conversation. And then we're going to jump into board settings. This is my last week that I have. I have two last final sessions here with you all before I have to go and take this dreaded test. Ronnie, why do you make me take tests?
Because it's good for you. Also, it's not like I'm not taking the test myself. I have scheduled the test, so I am going to be taking it as well.
Oh, you're taking it in Barcelona?
No, um, they didn't want to give it to me for free this time around. So, um, no, I'm taking it locally before we head out July 1st, actually.
Nice. Okay, well, because I do want to cover as much material before I show up to the test center. Let's jump into it. So we're wrapping up this last 10 minute section on configuring views and sharing your plans. In basically in the Jira. So, uh, pre-configured views in plans. This is important, folks. This is a very, very important feature of the plan because the plan has a lot of benefits as we've covered over the last couple of sessions, right? But the biggest thing is your plan is shareable. And you want to create a single plan, even though everybody, or mostly everybody in your company can go and create a bunch of plans. You want to create like a single master plan that is your single source of truth. The problem is you go through all this effort to create this amazing plan that has all the right information in it. And then you create a view, but that view is localized to you. And so those fields and the way it shows up, the way the plan renders the information, it's unique to you, which presents problems when your manager or stakeholder goes into the plan. And they're like, wait, what the heck? What am I looking at? Where's the information? This doesn't look like the screenshot that I, that I was shared, right? Or that was shared with me. And so you want to use these views. So that when you're engaging with your stakeholders, everybody's looking at it in the same way. Okay, it's going to be very, very important. This is probably the biggest takeaway from this whole thing. Obviously, we're going to cover a lot more, but trust me, I've learned this one from experience. All right. So there are many settings that you can change in a plan, including how, which work appears, what color to use, the fields highlighted and more. You might want to create multiple views for the same plan data rather than creating multiple plans for the same data. Or with the same data, you can create save views that enable you and others to analyze and highlight specific information in your plan. And there are four pre-configured views available in every plan. You can leave them as they are. You can delete them or you can change them. So we have the basic view. I usually work out a basic, like I would say nine times out of 10, I'm in the basic view. It just highlights key information like your start date, your due date, your status. You can add other fields and stuff like that, but that's usually what I'm working out of. We got the top level view, gives you a high level view of how your work is progressing and highlights a hierarchical relationship between work. Work items are grouped by projects and colored by teams. So what it's doing is it's doing some pre-grouping for you and some pre-coloring for you. I like this. I think this is a good like manager stakeholder view. But nine times out of 10, I'm still reverting back to the basic view since I'm most likely going to customize the heck out of that view anyways. We have a dependency view, which only shows the work items that have dependencies. So you can find items that have bottlenecks because it's very easy to, well, it's very convenient to, you know, map out your dependencies, but then it's very easy to be overwhelmed by all of these lines going everywhere. Right? And so this view at least weeds out anything that doesn't have a dependency. And then my least favorite view is the capacity view, which shows you your priority, your sprint, your story points, your team and the release fields. And this is great if you're doing capacity planning and you set up teams. Not so helpful if you don't do that. So what can you change in your view? So there are many things that you can change. So you can do all your view settings. So the color by, the sort by, the group by, whether the dependency shows as a line or as a badge and the roll up. So this used to be very powerful, Rodney, and it changed recently. It used to be able to roll up any number field and now it doesn't do that. Now it's just these. It rolls up. The dates. I think this is supposed to be number fields. Roll up no fields.
I think that's supposed to be number.
But it doesn't do that anymore. It doesn't roll up your number fields. It rolls up your sprints, your releases, your teams and your estimates. So that is basically everything here. It'll roll it up for you.
The big thing, especially when you're dealing with budgets, that managers always want to know when they're coming up with the plan or doing these what-if scenarios, is what is that final cost for whatever I'm doing?
Yeah.
Roll up would be great for that. If it was still allowed.
Yeah, I, I don't know why they changed that. It was one of my favorite features. We also have your filters. This is probably again where a lot of people struggle because the, the view settings here, they're cool and all, but most people don't get tripped up there. Most people get tripped up here because you take it for granted that, remember, like a good haircut, it's hard to put hair back on after you cut it off. So it's easy to bring in a lot of data into your plan and filter, right? Filter, uh, specific views and whatnot. Specific components, specific releases, right? But then other people, when they come in, they don't see that same thing. And so you want to, if you're going to alter your, your filters and expect your stakeholders or somebody else on your team to look at the same data, you want to save this. You want to save this part. You want to save this, this view. Otherwise, they're going to trip up. Now, the biggest trip up that I see is for some reason, I don't know, Rodney, if you've experienced this, but my plan, the hierarchies are usually set to be at the same level, like initiative to initiative. And so oftentimes I'll share a plan with somebody and they'll be like, what happened to the epics and the stories? And I'm like, they're there. And they're like, no, they're not. Is it the first thing that I have to do? If you don't save the view is, well, go change. But if you save your view, then you can already preconfigure the hierarchy. So they're, they're going to get the right hierarchy.
I've done that a couple of times.
This is another pretty big one too. So there's going to be fields that you and your team become dependent on to, you know, communicate information. Every user of the plan has to go and add those custom fields. And it's a pain in the butt to add a custom field. And then every user then needs to, once they've added and enabled those custom fields, add them to their plan. And so this way again allows you to kind of bypass that nuance and, and just add them. And then your timeframe, which is going to be this, are we looking at the quarterly view, monthly view, yearly view? And these get preset for you so that you can essentially share it with your stakeholders. Now, creating a view is very easy. So you click on the views dropdown. There's a create new view button. You'll give it a name. You click save. Any changes that you make, you just keep, you always have to go back and click the save button. And that's it. Again, this is what it looks like. You have your basic view. You can edit any of these. So any changes that you do, you can always hit save. Or you can just create a new view and then save it. So now let's talk about sharing our plan with our stakeholders because this is, this is where I think Atlassian could do better. You can, you have four different methods to share this plan. You can obviously just give them a URL to the plan. You can export it to a CSV, but I've found that to not be the most friendly of views. You can give them a static image, which is okay until you have a massive plan. And then you can embed it. So this is going to like, let you embed it to like Confluence. But the link is probably the most common one, but the problem is, again, this is where I think Atlassian can do drastically better. You have to pay to play. Everybody needs a Jira license. And I feel like this should be like a read-only to for free type of situation. Because let's face it, your CIO is not going to have need to be in Jira every day. But they need to see what the heck is in that plan. So Atlassian, if you're listening, give us free stakeholder licenses and plans. Okay. Diego wants to clearly and visually differentiate which work items the Android team is working on and which work the iOS team is working on. What's the best way to do this? Group, right?
Yeah, group.
I would either group or sort it, but it seems like they want to see them both. So there you go. Uh, Lita likes the pre-configured sprint capacity management view in her plan, but she wants to add a custom field to it. True or false? She can modify the four pre-configured and save them. This is true.
Yep.
I got another badge. Yay. All right, now I got myself too far out. So we're here. So we finished all of these. These are all done. And we're on to the last one, configuring Agile boards in Jira projects. So we got four modules here. We're going to just jump into the first one, configure your board settings and filters. Let's start this course. Creating a board in Jira. All right, folks, in case you missed it, we have finished all of the plans discussion that we started last week when I was having my internet problems. And we are now moving on to Jira board, uh, settings and configurations. We're going to create a board. So what types of boards can you create? Well, there's two types. And I don't know how this is going to be changing now that Atlassian is kind of going away from this Scrum Agile mentality. But as of right now, we have two boards, Scrum and Kanban. Rodney, do, if you pick a work management template, do you still get a, you just have a board, right? So it doesn't, it's not Kanban or Scrum?
Yeah, you have a different kind of board altogether that's not even using the same code base.
So weird. Atlassian should update this. We need three.
I mean, how many, um, it seems weird that after 10 years since they've popped Greenhopper, these are still the only two options.
And they still are, and they're incompatible with each other, especially with respect to their workflow. All right, well, let's talk about each. So this is an interesting video because I was actually going to record a video this week about the difference between Scrum and Kanban board. So maybe some information from here will make it into that video. So what is a Kanban board? So Kanban boards don't have fixed time intervals. New work moves into the board continuously as a team completes their work. So basically, whenever you hit the create button, something goes into that for status and it's on your board. So if you, you don't necessarily have a backlog per se. And so if you add 10,000 items, well, 5,000 is the limit. So if you add 4,000 items, then you'll have 4,000 items in your to-do column. Then you move those items to in progress and then to done. On the Scrum, however, you have something called a backlog. So the Scrum board is going to show you sprints. And so you have to create sprints and sprints are time intervals, usually two weeks, but you can customize that. And a team takes all of that work in that backlog out of the 4,000 items. And they commit to what they're going to complete during that sprint. And they estimate how much time and effort it's going to take them. And so when they start the sprint and only when they start the sprint, do those work items appear on the board. And when it ends, anything that got finished gets off your board. And anything that didn't gets either rolled to the next sprint or to the top of the backlog. And so this was a kind of a tricky thing because you can create 4,000 items and they will not be on your board until you plan them into a sprint. Uh, Tushar says, we need Scrum board desperately for our team. Yeah, uh, my, my advice would be pick Kanban. Well, it depends. If you, if you truly need sprints, if you need the sprint mechanism, you, Scrum is the only way you can go. But, uh, if you're going to do a hybrid, you have two options. You can either go with the Kanban board and enable the backlog. So you're like 80% of the way there. Or do a Scrum for the, the, the portion of your process that needs to be Scrum. And then do a Kanban board off the same workflow, but for the steps that don't need to be part of Scrum. But you can, you can have one giant workflow with like 10 steps in it, 10 statuses. And like five of those statuses are in Scrum and then the other five are in Kanban. And that'll get you closer to Scrum Bun. When will Atlassian listen to its customers? I don't know. Tushar, if you have questions like this though, let me know so I can ask Dave on Thursday.
We, um, we still have tickets from customers that are really popular. There's a lot of votes, a lot of attention, a lot of comments on them that are now old enough to drink in the US. Drinking age here being 21. So just consider that next time you ask, when will Atlassian, um, listen to the customers?
Maybe 30 years.
20 years from now.
All right. Here's one of my Jira pet peeves, Rodney. I hate it. Hate it when somebody calls a project they board. They're not the same thing. A board is very, yeah, a board is very different than the project. Very, very different.
But I could see why people would make that confusion.
Yes, especially now with the way these, we have this third board type that is not a Scrum or Kanban. I can see that, but fundamentally, especially if you're coming from the software template, your boards and your projects are very much the same. Normally, one project will have one board. That's okay. That's how they live. And the board is designed in such a way that anything that's in that project is shown in the board. But the moment you finish your first sprint, that's when things start to deviate on you. Because your project contains all of your work. Your board contains all of your remaining work. So all open work is on the board. All work is on the project. So including the work that has been finished. Your board, once you, once you close your sprint, once you move something to done after one or two weeks, that data goes away. It hides, it gets dropped from the board, but it's still in the project, but not on the board. Now, if you're using a company managed project and specifically the software type template, then you can have, actually have multiple boards. And so you can have multiple teams working on one project. You may want to create a board for each team. Then each team can set up their own board to reflect how they work. Different examples, you may want to use both Scrum and Kanban boards in the same project to track different types of work. Boards are typically just views of work in a project. So you can create multiple boards that contain any selection of those work. Keep in mind, if the boards use different work type schemes, they may also have different workflows. If a work on, is on multiple boards, make sure you can move it through all the statuses on our boards. Very, very helpful tip there at the end. But this is a very viable scenario, right? In company managed projects, you can set up this scenario where you have multiple boards drive off of one project. Problem is, and I'll highlight this one here. Where was it at? Well, I'll, I'll mention it here. When you create a new board, the filter defaults to show me all the work in this project. So to create three boards with the exact same filter would be very, very silly. You don't want to do that. You want to, each board should have a unique filter so that you see different types of data. Because if you, if all three boards just show you the exact same thing, then there's no point in having three boards. Now, there can be some overlap, right? You can have some issues show up in two boards, but some is the keyword, not all.
Now, I will give that a caveat.
Very big one. I was going to say something too, but I'll let you go.
If you have a board or an issue on a board that is a part of a sprint and you move that issue to another project where your sprint master, whoever's responsible for it, does not have managed sprint permissions, you will no longer be able to end that sprint. Moving an issue does not remove it from a sprint because as Alex was saying in the beginning, boards and projects are not the same thing.
I was going to add that if you have two Scrum boards and a story makes it upon to both Scrum boards, then Jira is going to treat them as one sprint and you just contaminated, uh, your sprints. And so closing one will close both. And so it's very possible, it's very possible you just prematurely ended somebody's sprint. So I always tell people, if you're going to create multiple boards, one, you're going to have as many Kanban boards as you want. There's no consequences there. But if you're going to go the Scrum route, then you want to make sure that that story or task or bug is not in two Scrum boards at the exact same time. Otherwise, you're going to have some very, very annoying days ahead of you.
If you need to add an issue, the use case I hear for Alex's use, um, situation is, well, I need to add this issue to my board so I can watch it because it's blocking something I need to do. This is where you use your issue links. Don't add it to your sprint. Don't add it to your board. Just link the issue that's being blocked to the issue that's doing the blocking. And I'll tell you on the issue, hey, this issue is blocking me is now done.
All right, one board with multiple projects. So this is dramatic. This is my least thing to do. Especially since if you're not in the premium version of Jira, you start breaking things. Right? And so it is possible for you to have a single board that is referencing multiple projects. But you want to be careful because what's not pictured here, and this is an unfortunate picture, is that that board still needs to exist in a project. A board just cannot exist for the sake of existing. It needs to be associated with a project. And so, uh, this complicates things in a number of ways. Rodney kind of mentioned one, right? Permissions, if you don't have the managed sprint permission on one of these, you're SOL'd. Uh, and second, and this is the big one, your timelines break in Jira. So you no longer have the ability to view the hierarchy because Jira's timelines will break. So you need to go to your advanced plans and make a jar, which is, you know, all the stuff we just covered. So be very cautious in doing this. I'm, I'm not a big fan or proponent of this picture here. All right, uh, boards filter query determines what projects and work display on it. You can conclude, you can include work from multiple projects in the filter query. Even though the board will query multiple projects, it still only appears in one project. This is the location of the board. You don't have to show your, you don't have to show work from the location project on the board. For example, you want to show work from project A and project B on a board and project C. Your board doesn't appear in project A or in B. It doesn't, it does appear in project C, but it doesn't include. So yeah, basically you get to control what work shows up using your filters. But just be careful because if you don't have the right browse or you don't have the managed sprints, or if you have multiple Scrum boards, you're going to cause some contaminations and you're not going to be happy camper. How do we create a board? So creating a board is very, very easy. You literally click on the little plus button here next to your project and it'll create a board. You pick whether it's Scrum or Kanban. And then you, you have a new option that asks you what kind of data would you like to see in it? I just say, show me everything. And then I go and modify the filter. Now, you do have three options. You, you can, um, you can either like use an existing filter if you have one, or you can go and modify the filter after the fact. I like to do the filter after the fact for the simple fact that if you create an existing filter, it defaults to private. And if you apply a private filter to a board, then guess what? Your board is not private as well. But if you create the board and just associated to an existing project, then that filter for the board is open to the project and all you got to then do is modify the query. But now you don't have to worry about permissions. So I like this way better. And the way that I never do is create a new board on a new project because this creates a whole new thing entirely altogether. And I think a lot of people usually miss that point.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of situations where I've had to go and tell people, look, you can create your own board that just covers all your projects. You could in theory create a board that just gives you view of everything you're supposed to be working on. It's very customizable at a user level that you don't have to get the Jira admins involved. And that's one thing that makes boards so powerful.
All right. So what have we learned? Marina, the project admin, she wants to track some of her team's work in sprints and on a Scrum board, but also wants another board of long-term work in her project and their status. What project types should she use? So the moment you want a second board, you have to go company because team can only have one board.
Yep.
A Jira, Gia, what a name to have. Imagine being named Gia and working with Jira. That's just one character away from a lot of confusing emails. Anyways, sorry, Gia, your name is Gia. She's a project admin. Uh, she wants to include her work from three team managed projects in one board. What project type should she use? Can you do that?
In theory, if you query it.
If you can query it, I guess you can, but you, you got to do it in company because team manage can't do. They can only just.
You can't modify the team match project board to do that.
Yeah. All right. Now let's talk about some board settings. So, um, we have some board settings that you can configure that are kind of cool. So to do that though, you need to be a board admin. So what is a board admin? So a board admin can configure the board, including the work items that appear on it and its appearance. By default, the person who creates a board is included as a board admin. And company managed projects, a board admin can grant that role to other users. Now be very mindful. This is not the same thing as a project admin. It's not the same thing as a Jira admin or a site admin or an org admin. This is like, on the board, you can make some changes that period.
Yep.
So how do we add a board admin? So go to your board. Go to the board settings. And then administrator field and just put somebody's name in there. In team managed projects, all project admins can configure the board. There isn't a separate board admin role. If you want to enable a user to configure the board, you have to grant them admin to the whole project. This enables them to configure other things like features and fields and stuff like that. Jira admins can administer all boards on the Jira site, even if they aren't listed as board admins. This is true. Unlike a Jira project admin, which is, isn't this dumb, Rodney? That a Jira admin can administer all boards on the site, but they can't administer all the projects?
I usually, um, enforce a project role that gives me admin access to all projects.
Yeah, but you have to like, especially to, especially to work in the project. If you're a site admin, you can access the settings, but you, you can't do certain things like add releases or, or components, or actually, you know, create work in it because you don't have the browse permission.
But you know what permission you do have?
Administrator?
Administrator permissions permission.
Yeah. So then you can go and add yourself.
That's usually what I end up doing. I'm like, oh, you didn't think to add the admins onto this project, but now you want my help. Guess what's the first thing that's going to happen?
So there's some settings that you can configure other than adding admins. And so some of those settings are, you can basically, um, move the board from one Jira project to another. And you're not altering the filter. You're just altering which way, which project that board is going to be visible in. So you can create a board to show certain work items from project A and then locate the board to project B. I don't know why you would do this, but you can. To change the board's location, you just click on all these buttons, click on general and then select location. In board settings, you can change, your changes apply immediately. You don't need to save them or confirm them. That's good to know. All right, Hamish is the Jira admin.
Always trips me up because I'm always looking for, where's the apply button? Where's the save button?
I know. I wish there was consistency. Maybe that's another Dave question. Why is there no consistency in the way you save items in Jira?
We do know, we want Atlassian to, we do want Atlassian to come back. So we can't give them all our gripes.
Poor Dave. I don't know that he knew, no, I'm, I'm telling you, we're working on that scroll. We're like, here's the list of everything we're going to talk about here. All right, Hamish is a Jira admin. He is not listed as a board admin on the data science board. True or false? He can configure. Yes, that is true because he's a Jira admin. You can configure them all. Anthony's board shows data from the marketing team project. He wants the board to appear in the web design project. Both projects are company managed. Which setting allows him to do this? Okay, he wants the board to appear. So he wants to move it. I think it's the board location. Yay, next lesson. All right. Determine what displays on Jira boards using filters. So control what appears on your board. This is the most important thing about this whole board stuff, folks. Your board filter is going to make or break you. So each board has a filter that determines which work is displayed on that board and it uses J Quill. Okay, and this is very critical. All of the rules of filters apply here. Even though it's called a board filter, it's basically just a regular filter. And so all of the rules that govern a regular filter in Jira apply here. So permissions is going to be critical. If you make a new filter and apply it to your board, that filter by default, nine times out of 10, is a private filter. Your board will become private. Two, if you don't have edit permission to a filter, then you can modify a filter, but Jira is going to prompt you to save a new filter. You won't be able to edit that filter unless you're the original author. When you save a new filter, it defaults to being a private filter. So then you need to go back into the board, apply the new filter. And then you're going to forget that it got saved as a private filter and you just broke that board for everybody. So whenever possible, work with your existing. So whenever possible, work with your existing board admins or specifically the filter author. And Jira will tell you who the author is to gain access so that you too are also an author. Another thing, if you are a Jira user and you are creating filters, you have an option to control who's the viewer and who's the editor. As a general rule of thumb, add your site admins as a group that can edit your filters in case you're on vacation. You're not gonna get pulled away from the hammock and the beach and your coconut, right? To come in and edit your filter. So do yourself a favor there and let your site admins have edit privilege so that they can go do the work while you're sipping your pina colada.
And one more, one more thing. Every project that returns from your filter, you will need permissions for, for your board to work properly. This is why the first thing I usually do is say project equals and limit whatever the returns are to a specific subset of projects.
Ooh, one more, one more, one more thing. Do not, uh, say and or label equals something. Because especially if you do like or labels equals QA, then this opens you up to every project in Jira. And you need to have admin rights to every project in Jira, which is probably not gonna happen unless you're a Jira admin.
Ask me and Alex how we have come up with all these scenarios that you need to watch out for, for boards.
Because we've been there.
And I'm just in there ticking them down like, yep, yep, been there, done that.
Oh, the scars on our bodies. All right. And some of them are not because of surgeries, right Ronnie?
Only some.
Only some. All right. So board filters behave differently depending on their project type. A team managed board can only include work items from that project that it's in. Because of that, don't ever use team managed projects. Is what this should say. So basically, uh, team manages what you see is what you get. You're not gonna configure anything. A, a company managed board though can include work items from a single or from multiple. And so to do that, you're gonna, you know, change your board filter and this basically behaves just the way it would behave again if, if you were to make a regular filter. So one team, one project. So we have team A has a board, a new engineering project called E N G is created from the Scrum project template. The board filters automatically configured to show all the work items on that project. Here's how you would write the query. Full disclosure, um, this is the query that is created automatically. So you just need to create the project and the board will automatically have that filter. So I don't know why they would do this. One team, multiple projects. So you put your project in. Now remember, if you wanna do anything beneficial, you need to make sure you have the right permissions when you go down this route. Multiple teams and one project. So you can go labels in team A team or B team. I'm again, I would avoid this labels thing. I would use a team field properly or a custom field and avoid this. Because if somebody forgets the hyphen, if somebody puts an A space team or at least they fix.
Colon team or team A or.
Yeah.
Lower or all capital, um, A team or all lowercase A team or I'm making my point.
Yes. Avoid labels in your, in your filters. Um, multiple teams and multiple projects. So you can do the combination of both and yeah. Uh, oh, this, go ahead.
I had something. Uh-oh. Um, it was about the one team, multiple projects. Um, I do want to be specific. What happens if you configure your board, your filter to have multiple projects, but you cannot? You do not, do not have the browse projects permission on all projects involved. You just do not see like half the issues on your board. They're still a part of it and other people who do have access can see that on your board, but you will not be able to see it.
Yep. Also 30 minutes into this, I'm reminded to remind you that this episode and this entire series has been brought to you by our good friends over at Revise. So make sure you check out Revise. Link in the description.
How is it you pitched revise sooner in your previous session where they were not the sponsor than in this one where they were?
I'm making it up to them by mentioning them in other videos. Uh, this was very important, folks. Um, Jira has a ranking capability in your board, which I find very, very valuable and powerful. If you remove it, then expect a less, a segregated experience in your board.
Now Alex, are issues ranked just within the board or are they ranked globally?
Uh, oh, that's a great question. I would say that they're ranked relative to their board, but I think they're ranked.
Field is a global field and it does rank every issue globally. And it just figures out within a board, well, how that works out. I don't fully understand this system on either. I've looked at the code back in my server days, but.
There's a race condition you can introduce, right? If you rank, if you have two separate boards and they're both ranked number one, obviously it's, it's a, the ranking mechanism is very interesting, right? Because it's, it's not like a one through 10 value. It's like letters and numbers, right? But if you, if you were to go to independent boards and you rank them both first, and then all of a sudden you create a third board that pulls them both in, who gets top spot?
Did Jira figures all that out automatically somehow in the background when they're ranked? If both boards are created at the same time and both have issues that rank first, globally they're not ranked the same. One is still number two. I just don't know how it does that figuring out.
Yeah. My, the reason I was hesitating is because one of my favorite things to do is in the plan, you can rank. And that rank is honored across the board as well. But what's more interesting is that the board usually rank your stories, your tasks and your bugs. But the plan, you can rank your epics and your initiatives and themes and goals or whatever else you add. And that to me is much more powerful.
How I found this out is, um, I had a index that the server completely, server VMOs completely crashed on. So the index was entirely corrupted. I had to get rid of the old index and rebuild it from scratch. One of the steps, if you look at the logs while it's rebuilding from scratch, is rebuilding the ranking table. And it goes through every issue globally.
Well, now you know. All right. Manage who can view company managed board filters. As a company managed board admin, you can manage which users can view your board by adjusting permissions. Uh, again, these are gonna be basically the same permissions as your filter. So if you don't set it the right viewers, I would at a minimum set the viewers to be your project. That, that would be my nine times out of 10 case. I would add, look at that. They even do it. They, it's kind of like they read my mind. I would add your site admins as the editors in case you are on vacation, sipping a pina colada, hanging out in the hammock somewhere. Uh, you will not be called because somebody can do it for you.
I have usually a level one backup that someone on the team and then a level two backup that is the Jira admins.
To see where.
I'm not.
To see the work items on a board and a team managed project, users need a permit, users need permissions to view that project's work items. And it's, it's a little less nuanced over there. Ah, subfilter, something I don't always create, but I know you like subfilters, Ronnie.
I love subfilters on Kanban boards because they add a lot of flexibility on what items get displayed.
So let's reemphasize a word that you just said. This is for Kanban boards. Hey, you're not gonna find this in the scrum board, but if you're in a Kanban board, you can create a subfilter. Right? And by default, these boards have a subfilter that shows work items that either don't have a fixed version or are on an unreleased version. So basically, it's gonna show you work that's important because nobody's finished it or worked on it. Okay. Uh, the subfilter query enables you to show a subset of the work items encompassed by the board filter. So remember we were talking about that it's possible for you to add like 4,000 issues to your board? Well, 4,000 might be a whole lot. So you might wanna, I wanna weed that out. And so you can create a subfilter to show fewer work items on that board. And so you click on your board subfilter and you click the check mark to save your changes. Interestingly, your board reports will always reflect all work items in the board filter regardless of the subfilter. So food for thought. My preference though, Rodney, is quick filters. I'd rather do a quick filter than a subboard filter. And so these boards allow you to do a quick filters that allows you, users to limit which work items are displayed. And then what I like about it is that you get this cool little button here that your users can just click on buttons and then magical automatically, if we're stealing that word. Without, we should be on a, on a, one of our shirts. But automatic.
I've been using that word for years for this kind of thing.
Yeah. So automatically, uh, your board will, will alter itself to show you these items that are assigned to you or whatever, whatever quick filters you create. Um, one key thing before we get on to how to create the quick filters is that these become and statements, which I find mildly annoying. I wish these would de toggle themselves or work, the phenomenon will work better. But basically if you click on assign to me, you selected it. If you go and click on recently updated, assigned to me will still remain selected. And so now you have an and statement. You have assigned to me and it was recently created. And so that can get you into real trouble real quick. And so sometimes you gotta just remember to deselect the trail of buttons that you're clicking. So you get the right data. Otherwise you keep building these and statements. And, um, you, you, you're not gonna get the data you're looking for.
But you can do interesting things like that. Like first part of your, um, quick filters are work item types. The second part is assigning. You can get all the bugs assigned to Rodney on the board. Or and just switch off Rodney, switch on to Alex. You see all the bugs now that are on Alex. So this ending functionality can be crazy useful if you use it right. You just need to, um, be mindful of that.
Right. Because if, if you did what you just said, but you left Rodney and Alex, now you're looking for all the bugs that belong to Rodney and Alex, and that's gonna return zero. So that's where you wanna be careful. Uh, board admins can remove these quick filters because you do ship a two of them, but you can remove them or you can make new ones. And so you go to your board settings. There's a quick filter section. You give it a name. You put in your JQL and then the board, the quick filter now becomes available. If users select, uh, see, uh, here's, if users select multiple quick filters when viewing the board, only work items that meet all the criteria will appear. And they should really underscore highlight all. Uh, creating custom filters. So team managed projects include a very similar feature called custom filters. Project admins can configure the filters using JQL and they appear as checkboxes on the board. I did not know this. I also don't spend enough time in team managed projects to even know that this would have been a feature. Basically the same idea. They're just called custom filters. I wonder why they changed it from quick filter to custom filters.
Make it easier for the new people to understand.
Yeah, newbies. All right. I understand how filters and queries affect the board. In the chat, do you, any of you actually use team managed projects? I'm just curious now. Okay. So the engineering team uses company managed Kanban boards. They take a look at a, the filter configuration below, then click on the boxes to see if you can determine what will display on the board. So we have a filter query that says bring, show me everything in engineering. We have a subfilter that says assigning is not empty. So I'm assuming there's gonna show you everything in this project that has an engineer. It's gonna hide any work that's older than two weeks. So you're gonna basically see any open work. And there's two quick filters, but it doesn't tell us if they're set. But one is where the, where the resolution equals, does not equal, cannot reproduce. And where the resolution is empty. I don't know why we would work against the resolution, but okay. Um, also don't let this confuse you. This is gonna hide completed work older than two weeks, but it will still show you completed work within the two weeks. And it's possible for that, for that delta, right? For that work that was completed within the last two weeks, that you can then filter out anything that got resolved in this way. So what work items display on the board? So assigned engineering work that is either unresolved or resolved less than two weeks ago. What work applies to the quick filter one and then as a, I don't even know what this thing is asking me. What work displays when you select quick filter one? It's gonna show you any engineering work that was resolved less than two weeks ago and that that resolution was not, cannot reproduce. What happens when you select two? It's gonna show you all the work items that are unresolved. What happens when you select both? No work items will display because again, both conditions have to be true. And what work items are in the board? So it's gonna show you everything that's in the board. Let's see what we've learned, Rodney. Um, Tom's company managed board has two subfilters, one that shows work items associated, assigned to the blue team. And one that shows work items assigned with an internal label. If Tom selects both subfilters, which work items will appear? One that shows work assigned to the blue team. And then this one.
Yep. C or a B.
But you can, can you select two subfilters? I don't use subfilters.
You cannot select two subfilters. You try.
And they're not quick filters. Quick filters you can, but on the subfilter, can you only select one at a time?
You know what I just did? And this is a warning. You need to read every word in the question. Alex is right. You can't select more than one sub.
Well, I don't know if I'm right. I'm asking if it's a feature. Oh, apparently you can. Can you select? Apparently you can. This is weird. We gotta go test that.
Uh, that's, that's not a, I think they mean quick filters.
What are you talking about? This is not the right answer. If some, if, if Tom selects both subfilters, the board will show all work items that are assigned to both and have the internal label. Oh, I, oh, they moved it around on me when I hit the, oh, my bad. The, this question used to be the second question. I, that's how I read it the first time. But we need to go check that. Can you select two subfilters at the same time? Oh boy. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna come back to y'all. The events team is working on two projects for fundraising event fund. And the website launch event web. They want to display their team's work items from both, both projects in one company managed board. How should they write their query? So this one automatically because the other ones don't have the right JQL. There's a third question. Uh, Daiki is a board admin for a company managed scrum board. One of the users in his project Jen can't see work items on the board, but she can see the project's work items in search. What could be the problem? Ooh. It could be A. It could be A. Next course. All right, Ronnie.
One moment. I pulled up our Kanban board on the TGL Jira instance. Tell me where I had a second subfilter. They meant quick filters.
They definitely meant quick filters. Dun, dun, dun.
I, that was just driving me crazy. So I'm sorry. Just still screen for me, but.
No, no, it's, I, I didn't think you could put two either. So they either, either A, the question is wrong or B, the question is wrong because it meant they meant, uh, quick filters. So, oh, I lost it. See, this is why I worry. This is like, this is where we gotta go yell at Bob as a, as a certification to me. Like they have to catch those kinds of things in the, in the exams, right?
Yeah, yeah, they do. Bob will not let this fly if it came across his desk. We both know this.
Well, we should ask Bob what the right answer is for this. I would be curious if Bob gets this one right because I didn't think you could, but then you, looking at you, you kind of thought you could. So I'm like, I don't know what I think now.
Well, I thought they could because I read it as quick filters because that's the one that makes sense.
Did the sexy kick in there real quick?
Yeah. And well.
All right. So we got, we got 10 minutes. I'm gonna say we push through this as good as far as we can. Cause again, I only have until Thursday. And then I'm taking the dump test. So configuring your board columns and status. Configuring your board columns and statuses, so match your board to your workflow. Your board should represent how your team really works. In Jura, we call that your workflow. You can tailor your workflow using statuses and transitions. On the board, statuses are represented by board columns and transitions are represented by dragging the work between the columns. So here's your columns. You should have a status of to do and progress and done. Although your statuses don't need to map or match with the names of the columns. So how do we configure our columns? So uh, you need to be a board admin, right? And uh, you need to be able to do this here. Um, but your columns are gonna reflect the different sta- statuses that your work are in, okay? And so you can add columns, you can create a new column on your board. You, you're at, you're at a column if you're a new status to your workflow or if you have two statuses in the same column. Now, if you're not a Jura admin, when you add a new column, it's gonna basically, every column needs to have a status in it. You can't have an empty column. And so if you're not a Jura admin, then you're not gonna be able to create a new status, should you add a new column and you, you basically need a new status. So I usually add the new status in my workflow first and then go and add the column and map the status. You can remove the columns, that's easier, right? You either unmapped the status or you, you put the status in another column. You can rename your columns. So this is what I was telling you, your column names don't need to match um, what's in Jura. And this is pretty important, your, your column names always appear in uppercase on the board. And you can always reorder. Now, if you reorder them, you will find this slightly annoying because the workflow still trumps here. And so the transitions dictate the, the ordering here. So if you have transitions, um, then your columns are gonna be out of sync. Like you're gonna go from left and then you gotta go all the way to the end and then come back because transitions rule. The Jura last disclaimer, not my board, not my team or project, thank goodness, but I think twenty seven columns.
I had asked the chat, how many board, how many columns have they seen on a single board?
Man, you're scrolling for days.
I will add this, you can have more than one status under a single column. And if you're able to transition to any of the statuses under there, all the ones you're able to select from will appear as different areas on the board that you just drag, go up and down to dra- um, drop it on to.
Alright, so your board configuration is different in company managed than team managed. So in the team managed, if you add a column, then you're basically adding a status automatically, cause you have the permission. If you got that far, you can do that, but in company, it's not the same. So you're gonna go to your board settings, you're gonna select your columns and you're gonna add a column. To remove the column, you just delete the column by clicking the little trash can. To rename it, you click into the box and then you'll be able to rename it and it's reorder, you just simply drag and drop the column. In team managed, you can add the column by clicking the create column. To remove, hover over the column you'd like to edit, then select the edit column, then select the delete, delete, that's not easier. To rename, you hover over the column, then select edit column and then type the new name. And then to reorder, you just click and drag. Can you control how much work is in a column? So you can manage your work in progress in Jura using column constraints in company managed projects and column maximums in team managed projects. These features are slightly different, but both help your team quickly identify problems in your workflow by changing the appearance of the columns that exceed the constraints of the max, maximum. So in other words, how many items can your team have in like the status of in progress at any given time? And it actually changes the color of the board, of the column if you exceed that number. So company managed projects use column constraints to set a maximum and minimum number of work items in each column. To configure a column constraint in a company managed project, go to the column section, set the columns constraint to work item count. Set the maximum minimum number of work items for any column. You can choose, you can also choose whether or not to include subtest in the count. And the team managed ones, you're setting column maximums. And so you're gonna go to the same place, edit the column in the maximum number, enter the number. So you can't put, oh, so that's interesting. So the constraint is max men on company, but only max on the company, I mean on the team.
To be clear, even when I've used it on a company managed project, I have never used the men. I've always used the max. And it's usually something along the lines of, oh, your team only has five workers. The manager wants to enforce it, so there's only five issues in progress at a time. Which is infuriating, cause that's not how real life works at all, but
No, not at all. Alright, users still, users will still be able to add more work items than the maximum or leave fewer work items than the minimum. Even with the column constraints, just the column visually flags that, right? So your column changes color. Let's explore an example. Let's say a team decides that they want to have at least two work items in the, in progress and they never want more than four work items. So how would you configure this? Well, you would add your column constraints, you put two and four. And once you do that, you'll see the minute and the max and you see that you have one in progress. But you're under the two, so it's yellow. And then when you have too many, it turns red because you have five items and your max was four. So it's, it's visually stimulating. I like it. Um, now that's adding the columns, right? That's, that's a little bit more trivial. What's harder though is when you're adding statuses. So every column needs to have at least one status. So you just can't create empty columns, like that's not gonna be allowed. Um, a column can have multiple statuses, though you, this is totally possible. You can stack them. I would be careful though, cause then now your team has to have good hand eye coordination. Cause when they drag it, it's gonna prompt them, is it the top one or the bottom one?
Yeah, they should be playing games together anyways.
Yeah, a status can only be in one column, so you can't have a status show up in multiple columns. And you can hide work items in a specific status on the board. So if you unmapped it, if you were to take a status out, the, the status is still available on the dropdown of the status field, so your team's still gonna be able to pick that status. But if they go into that status, that issue will disappear from your board. So not a good practice. I don't know why that's a feature.
I have gotten so many tickets. Where's my issue? Based on that.
Yeah, if a work item is currently in a column, you can't drag it to a different status in the same column. Oh yeah, so if you stack them like we did up here where they're stacked, you can't go up and down. You can only go left and right, so keep that in mind as well. Alright, what did we learn? True or false, a status can be mapped in more than one column, but a column can, can include, well, that's totally false.
Absolutely opposite.
Yeah, Laura and her team wants to configure the company managed board to show that only five work items should be in the progress part any time. What's the best way to do this? Where's column constraint? That's the only one that's right. I didn't even have to read the questions. I'm just looking for a keyword. Gustavo is a project admin for a team managed project. His team uses both selective for development and to do statuses for specific purposes. Wants work items in these statuses to be in the same place on the board. Eh? I'd probably go with that one. Let's go with that one. Alright, so folks, that's it for today. We're gonna come back using backlogs for planning next uh, on Thursday. Hopefully, we can finish the remainder of this course. We got two ten minute sessions. Followed by a ten and five minute session, followed by another twenty minutes. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we can get through all this, so that I can go take my test on Saturday. If you haven't subscribed, make sure you hit that subscribe button and a special thank you to Revise for making this, not only this episode, but this entire learning series of A C P six twenty possible. So thank you, Revise.
Thank you, Revise.
Link down in the description. Check them out. Bye.
Bye.
Oh boy.